Okay, good evening councillors and members of the public and welcome again to the Policy Committee being held as an online meeting because social distancing rules are still in place. So I'm councillor Jason Brock, I'm the leader of the council and the Chair of the Policy Committee. As with previous meetings, for clarity, I will ask members individually at the end of a debate on each report to state whether they are for, against, or wish to abstain from the recommendation before them at that stage. I'll shortly ask members to introduce themselves for the benefit of the public and to ensure that everybody is in attendance as expected and that you can all speak to the meeting and hear the meeting. I'll remind members as ever to keep your microphones on mute when you are not speaking. When you're called to speak, unmute your microphone, pause for a couple of seconds to allow for the slight time delay in connection. And remember to put your camera on before being called to speak as well. And kind of make sure all councillors have their cameras turned on for the roll call. Acknowledge as we all do that we are at the mercy of individual broadband connections and if anybody drops out, we will still be quor it as long as we have three members in the meeting. So time for the roll call. So as I said, I'm Jason Brock, Chair of the Committee, Leader of the Council, and I will call the other members of the committee alphabetically. Councillor Devine.
Hi, it's Ricky Devine, Libdome councillor for Tynehurst.
Councillor Emberson.
Good evening, it's councillor Ellie Emberson, Lead for Corporate and Consumer Services.
Councillor Ennis.
Hello, it's John Ennis, Lead Councillor for Housing.
Councillor Hoskin.
I'm Graham Hoskin, I'm Lead Councillor for Health, Wellbeing and Sport.
Councillor Page.
Good evening, councillor Tony Page, Lead Member for Environment Planning and Transport and Deputy Leader of the Council.
Councillor Skeets.
Councillor Jeanette Skeets, Thames Ward councillor and Leader of the Conservative Group.
Councillor Stevens.
Good evening, David Stevens, I'm a tenable councillor as well and also Chairman of the Audit and Governance Committee.
Councillor Terry. Are you there councillor Terry?
Sorry, yeah, good evening, Liz Terry, Lead Member for Children's Services.
Thank you. And councillor White.
Councillor Rob White, Park Ward councillor and Leader of the Green Group of Councillors. Good evening everyone.
Thank you councillors and I'd also like to introduce the officers who are in attendance tonight, just so that everybody knows who they are and what their role is. So Mike Graham is our Assistant Director of Legal and Democratic Services as well as the Monitoring Officer. Shona Douglas is the Executive Director of Adult Care and Health Services. Peter Sloman is the council's Chief Executive. George Framalico is the Deputy Director of Planning, Transport and Regulatory Services. Mark Warringham is the Planning Policy Team Leader. Jackie Yates is our Executive Director of Resources and the Chief Financial Officer. Zelda Wolf is the Assistant Director of Housing and Communities. Sarah Taplis is the Strategic Housing Finance and Development Manager. And Frances Martin is our Executive Director of Economic Growth and Neighbourhood Services. I don't know how they ended up in that order, but they did. Moves us on then to item two, declarations of interest. I have one myself this evening in relation to item six. I am an unremunerated director of Reading UK, so I declare it as a personal rather than a pecuniary interest and I do not intend to absent myself from the discussion. Do any other councillors have declarations to make? Excellent. So having not received any indications, we'll move to the next item of business, which is the minutes of the previous meeting. Members, can I ask you to confirm that the minutes of the meeting held on the 24th of August 2020 are a correct record? Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you councillors. Minutes are approved and I'll sign them in due course. Moves us on to petitions and questions then. So we do have a petition this evening. We've also had questions from members of the public and questions from councillors. We'll come to those in due course. The petition though is from David McElroy and it's about increasing cycling targets in Reading. So Mr McElroy, if I welcome you to the meeting, if you press star six on your handset to unmute yourself and then you can present your petition and you have three minutes to speak to the committee on the topic of the petition.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can indeed, in your own time, Mr McElroy.
Excellent. Thank you for taking the time to reply to our petition to seek more ambitious targets on cycling in Reading. I think that seeing that there are so many signatories on this despite the lockdown being on, I think it shows that there's a fair bit of community interest in getting this right. As you can see from the question, we feel that setting the 2036 target at a level comparable to the rates of cycling other places in the UK already have is not ambitious enough. We need to at least have caught up by 2036, not just stayed firmly behind the curve. I've read your reply, I really appreciate the reply, thank you. I particularly agree with the comment that the COVID pandemic has shifted behaviour in this regard. This disruption in people's habits is a ticking, a time-bound opportunity to install new habits in their place. And if we do not seize this opportunity, the new habits will likely involve less exercise and more cars and air pollution. I think it's pretty safe to say that no one on this call wants to see that happen. I understood, understand that the consultation process because of this is ongoing due to the shift and welcome the council taking a second look and discussing what that looks like with this community. I strongly urge you to make particular effort to reach out to the community again, but also to reach out to the councillors in East Reading, especially those around any air pollution hotspots such as Cemetery Junction. So again, thank you for the time to allow us to present this petition. I appreciate your reply. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr McElroy. If I just put you back on to mute there and if I would ask councillor Page to respond formally then.
Thank you Chair. I thank Mr McElroy for submitting this petition to the council regarding our plans for increasing levels of cycling in the town, including the targets set as part of the draft new local transport plan, the LTP. The draft version of the LTP, the Reading Transport Strategy 2036, was published in March 2020 and followed initial consultations that we undertook in summer 2019. These consultations demonstrated strong support for increasing levels of walking and cycling in Reading alongside other sustainable transport modes. The draft strategy was prepared accordingly and was intended to be launched at our Strategic Environment Planning and Transport Committee on 16th March. But unfortunately, this meeting was cancelled at 30 minutes' notice due to the COVID emergency. We then relaunched the formal consultation on 4th May for an extended period until the end of August. At the time, we stress that, and I quote from the press release of the 4th of May, "At this stage, the duration of the COVID crisis is unknown as well as its long-term impact on society." As a result, the amended consultation asked for feedback specifically on how the strategy can contribute to Reading's recovery from the pandemic, as well as for feedback on the contents of the strategy itself. Alongside the new LTP, we also consulted on our draft local cycling and walking infrastructure plan. And this is a sub-strategy to the LTP, which sets out our planned active travel networks throughout the borough, together with key infrastructure improvements for both cyclists and pedestrians. Both the draft LTP and the LCWIP, the Local Cycling and Walking Infrastructure Plan, set out ambitious plans to increase levels of walking and cycling in Reading. However, since they were prepared, the COVID-19 pandemic has altered travel behaviour with more walking and cycling trips being undertaken. We have also secured limited funding to date through tranche one of the Emergency Active Travel Fund to deliver a range of schemes that involve reallocating road space for both pedestrians and cyclists. These schemes are currently temporary with a view to being made permanent if they prove to be successful and subject to the results of public consultation. We are currently reviewing feedback from the consultations for both the draft LTP and the LCWIP alongside the possible longer-term impact of the current pandemic on travel patterns. As part of this process, we are reviewing all of our targets in the local transport plan, including those for levels of cycling to reflect our future ambitions and in line with the increased levels of funding anticipated from government to increase levels of active travel and enable longer-term behaviour change. It should also be noted that we have recently submitted ambitious plans to government as part of tranche two of the Emergency Active Travel Funding Opportunity. These proposals involve introducing physically segregated cycle lanes in key locations to join up our existing strategic routes. We are currently awaiting a decision from government on the award of funding for these schemes. Initially, we were told we would hear from the Department for Transport in September, but this has now slipped to October at the earliest. I would add in response to some of the comments that Mr McElroy made at the start, that obviously if we secure the minimum of 1.2 million that the government indicated provisionally for tranche two, then we can obviously make further strides. We have actually submitted plans that could use over £5 million towards further cycling schemes and those are all set out on the council's website. Clearly, the more money we get from central government, the more ambitious we can be in delivering new schemes and clearly that will then be reflected in the final targets. But I would say to Mr McElroy that until we have those details from government, it would be ill-advised of any of us to talk about finalising targets. And in any event, the targets will be subject to regular reviews every couple of years to ensure that the challenge and stretch element is maintained because we are committed to not only increasing more walking and cycling, but we're also committed to seeing more use of public transport and sustainable modes of travel. So I thank him for his petition and we will obviously publish further details later this year or early next year. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Page. And thank you, Mr McElroy, for bringing the petition to our attention and for coming along this evening to present it. You're now free to hang up and you can watch the rest of the meeting online if you so choose. Thank you for coming along. So we move on then to questions from members of the public. Several were submitted from Mr Lightfoot and Mr Burt, but unfortunately they are unable to join us this evening. So they will receive written responses in line with the council's established protocols and practice. So we move on then to councillor questions, the first of which both tonight are from councillor White. And councillor White's first question is to Lead Councillor for Health, Wellbeing and Sport. If I could ask councillor White to read the question.
Thank you Chair. Many Reading residents have told me that they have found it impossible to get a test for COVID-19 recently. This seems like a basic part of identifying COVID-19 outbreaks quickly so that contacts can be traced or allowing people to get on with working, schooling and living. What figures does the council have access to on the number of tests residents have been able to access over the last few weeks? What is the trend on the number of tests available to Reading residents? And what is the council doing to get more tests for Reading residents? Thank you.
Councillor Hoskin to respond.
Thank you Chair and thank you councillor White for your question. I'm sure you share the Reading Labour councillors' dismay and anger at the shambolic state of the government's privatised test and trace system. Despite having had months to prepare, there is a major lack of capacity of labs to process tests leading to the difficulties that our residents are finding. The fast reached a low point when Lady Dido Harding, the government-appointed Tory peer boss of the Test and Trace, said that the surge in demand as children returned to school was unexpected. This is what happens when experts are excluded and we suffer government by cronies, not only cronies but incompetent cronies. For Reading, an issue we are facing is that where insufficient capacity has occurred in the testing system, a national decision has been taken to prioritise available tests to areas with outbreaks or they're in local lockdown and are not areas like Berkshire. Locally, the data tells us that the rate of testing in Reading has not changed particularly over the last month, but clearly demand has predictably increased. Through a range of channels available, to ask my fellow councillors and council officers have been and continue to make the case to central decision-makers about the need for sufficient testing capacity locally. We've also been working to identify additional testing sites in Reading where the mobile testing unit vans can visit and where local testing sites can be established. I'm pleased to say that on Thursday and Friday this week, the Prospect Park car park will have a mobile testing van present and it will be there on four further dates in October. Residents who had symptoms will need to book a test appointment via the online testing portal, the NHS COVID-19 app, or by calling 119. There were also reports in the local media recently about a test site at the University of Reading campus. I can confirm that we have been working closely with the university and the Department of Health and Social Care to establish a testing site there. And I look forward to being able to provide more details about that testing site in the near future, once the final sign-off process has occurred. I'd like to take this opportunity to personally thank the extremely hard work of the council's public health team in securing this local testing in the face of a national system that seems indifferent to Reading's needs. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hoskin. Councillor White, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you Chair. Yes please. First of all, thank you very much for the response councillor Hoskin. I'd seen in the local papers that Wokingham Council has bought some private tests for key workers. I don't know if this is something that the council has considered. Yeah, thank you.
Councillor White, how is that a valid supplementary seeking to clarify an element of councillor Hoskin's answer?
Because I have asked at the end of my question, and what is the council doing to get more tests for Reading residents? So I thought it flowed on from that, which councillor-
No, you see, that's asking the question again councillor White. So I'm afraid your supplementary is not in order. It has to seek to clarify the response given, not the question you asked. Councillor Hoskin, did you wish to respond?
Yeah, that's fine. We weren't planning to look at private testing. We are working with NHS Berkshire Healthcare Trust, who have been extremely supportive around providing some additional testing capacity for our health and social care system in order to maintain the capacity with that. Once we found out about Wokingham's decision, we are finding out what they've been up to and the efficacy of their tests and find out how that works for them. But working with local NHS is the way that we're proceeding at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hoskin. Second question is councillor White, again to Lead Councillor for Health, Wellbeing and Sport. Councillor White to ask a question.
Thank you Chair. What data does the council have on which segments of the population in Reading are testing positive for COVID-19? And how are the appropriate messages being targeted at these segments of our community?
Councillor Hoskin to respond.
Thank you Chair. Thank you for your question again councillor White. I can confirm that in Reading, like most areas of the country, we are seeing a higher rate of positive tests in certain cohorts of people across the borough. For example, of those testing positive, a slightly higher proportion are women than men. And there are high rates in some of our Black and Asian community groups. And it is those aged 18 to 34 where we have seen the biggest increase in positive tests most recently. We know that those who have tested positive for the disease do not represent everybody who has had the infection in Reading. And this is because some people have become infected without developing symptoms. And as we've been talking about in the previous question, testing has not always been universally available since the pandemic began. As a result, the council has developed relevant messaging for all residents, but also adopted a targeted approach to reach certain groups where higher rates occur, especially our Black, Asian and minority ethnic groups in Reading. Our strategy is built on working with partners and organisations to understand local need and develop materials that best meet local needs. We welcome input from partners to help us understand the requirements and needs of our communities and seek feedback on materials we produce. Examples of targeted materials include the Reading Borough Council webpage, the coronavirus COVID-19 part of the webpage, website, where we are hosting a bank of materials that we have created ourselves, including key COVID messages translated into 11 languages used locally. We're also signposting to resources from the NHS and World Health Organisation, including translated materials. We're currently working with the Royal Berkshire Hospitals, produce short videos in local languages with COVID safety messaging delivered by hospital staff. Reading Borough Council staff have also helped with translation requirements and provided key contacts within minority communities, for example, the Concane community. We targeted messaging around key dates, for example, around Eid, key messages on social distancing, test and trace and hygiene were delivered on social media, email newsletter, a YouTube video with councillor Ayew was produced and officers liaised directly with local faith leaders. Our Health and Wellbeing team already communicate directly to 120 faith organisations, including those that don't have official buildings and use community venues and the university student groups. These groups have been key in helping identify what translations are needed in Reading and providing a feedback on sense-checking communications. We have expanded this team to include an additional COVID-19 outreach and engagement officer to strengthen the council's community connections at this time. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hoskin. Councillor White, do you have a valid supplementary?
I don't have a valid one and I don't have an invalid one. You'll be pleased to hear, Chair.
Excellent. Saves us a lot of time. I will give councillors notice really that whereas in the past, I've often allowed lead councillors the opportunity to choose whether they wish to reply or not to invalid supplementaries. In future, I will simply rule them out of order and we will move on. Okay, that takes us to the end of councillor questions this evening. So we move on then to item five, which is decision books, a report noting, listing decision books published since the previous meeting of the committee. I've received no requests to speak on the item. So can we all just agree to note the report?
Agreed.
Thank you. I'll take general silence as a straightforward assent. And we move to item six, supporting Reading's economic recovery and renewal, pages 13 to 34 of your agenda papers, outlining the current economic situation in Reading as a result of the pandemic and the initial and ongoing response from the council and Reading UK CIC. So I will ask Frances Martin to introduce the report. And if any councillors wish to speak, please indicate in the chat. So over to the executive director then.
Thank you councillor Brock. So just by way of outlining the paper before you, this seeks committees' agreement to endorse the Powered by People strategy, which has been developed with Reading UK as our shared economic recovery strategy framework for Reading. The context of this is of course, the unprecedented economic impacts of the national international response to COVID-19, in particular as a result of lockdown imposed in March and then subsequent variations that we are all living through still. Predicting the nature and extent of the long-term economic impacts of the pandemic remains fraught with difficulty, but we do know enough to know that they are already significant and that they will have long-lasting effects on our communities and the economy. The challenge of forecasting the future is illustrated by the fact that government policy has seen a significant shift even since we produced this report and the committee papers have been printed, with the announcement of the change in emphasis from the furlough scheme designed to protect jobs across multiple sectors, to the new job support scheme which is designed to protect only viable jobs in sectors facing low demands. We had hoped by now that we could be moving on from the response phase to COVID to focus more on recovery, but the prospect of a second wave, the further lockdown measures and other activity that we are seeing in terms of increasing numbers in the community means that we're kind of being prevented from doing that. And the response phase is something that we're kind of getting drawn back into, I suppose. So in that context, even thinking about recovery at this point may seem premature, but I think it's really important that we look beyond the current crisis and keep our eyes on the longer term, setting out positive ambitions for Reading in line with the 2050 vision. And where possible, using this crisis as a catalyst to accelerate our progress towards them, including bidding for any government grants and funding that might be available. So the strategy, just to pick out a couple of key points from there, the title Powered by People was chosen because it is about the people of Reading, having made so many sacrifices and coming together so well through the crisis to date. And the main themes are around inclusive Reading, smart Reading and destination Reading, which reflect our key council priorities in terms of ensuring that most people benefit from the wealth and opportunities which exist or will be created in the town. It's clear that we will not be returning to normal anytime soon and that there will be more change to come, but this strategy gives us a framework for action which no doubt will develop over time. Thank you to Nigel and the team, Nigel Horton Baker, who has been instrumental in bringing this work together. There's a lot more to be done and we will flex it as we go. One thing to also say is this fits in with the council's response, but we're also part of a Berkshire-wide economic recovery response to ensure that the synergies are seen in a broader context. So I think I'll leave it there Chair and happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for the introduction. I think this is, I mean, this is such a fast-moving and fluid situation. And as you rightly say, executive director, we find ourselves very much back in a response mode and it does make it difficult for us to progress work around the recovery. And of course, the nature of that recovery will change and shift over time. So it's good that we have a sort of flexible approach here to allow us to adapt to changing conditions. And of course, as we move forward, the resurgence of Reading's economy will be a very important thing for residents right across the borough and indeed beyond the borough as well. So I'm really happy we have this before us and I fully endorse it personally. I just wanted to say very quickly, Angela, I think Reading UK have done some really very good work throughout the crisis and particularly have been good at helping small businesses and medium-sized enterprises as well with some of the challenges that they have found, both by the provision of advice, but also trying to link them up with other actors who might be able to provide solutions to some of their problems. And my thanks therefore to Nigel Horton Baker and his team over there. I don't really have too much else to say on this. And of course, as we progress forward, of course, there'll be updates and of course, there will be some changes to the plan. I have one indication to speak from councillor White, so I call councillor White.
Thank you Chair. As you and others have said, with the government's poor handling of some of the response to the pandemic with a second wave and a possible second lockdown, talk of recovery does seem premature to green councillors. But yes, it is good to be flexible and good to be prepared. Looking at the strategy, given the councillors declared a climate emergency, I would have liked to see the strategy being stronger in this area. But I accept that things are fast-moving and that support from the government hasn't always been as quick or as full as it might be. So I hope that as the strategy evolves, we will see more detail and progress in this area at a level that's needed to address the climate emergency. The real living wage is also mentioned in the report and I think this is key to tackling poverty in the town. The council has done some good work in this area. In the original motion, which I moved on this some time ago, lobbying local businesses was committed to by the council to get them to become accredited as living wage employers and to be paying at least the real living wage. Unfortunately, when I followed up on this some time ago, I was told that the progress in this area was going to be slow. It was too hard at the time. So I hope that the bright, shiny new leader of the council has more success and might update us on this in future. update us on this in future. I'd also like to highlight that it is Living Wage Week coming up in November and that the Living Wage Foundation tell me that they have a plan to have some online events and I hope the council will take part in this. If done right, recovering from this devastating pandemic, whenever that might be, does have the potential to create a fairer and more sustainable town and I'll be voting for the recommended action.
Thank you councillor White, I'm glad you think I'm still bright and shiny and new anyway. Okay, I think, I think it lets be, let's be candid about things, I think, you know, that the recovery is going to be difficult, especially with the need for an ongoing response phase, especially with the government's lamentable, dubious mishandling of this crisis. And I think as a, as a town, as a council, we need to put renewed effort and vigor into tackling inequality across Reading and we need to be far more innovative in how we seek to do that moving forward as well. We need to think of new policy solutions, look at things which maybe are successful elsewhere and try and adapt them to Reading circumstance, but also think about what is right for Reading and to be innovative and bold as we move forward. And of course, we want Reading UK to be active partners in that and I sincerely hope that members across the council, whatever political party, will participate in that endeavour as we move forward as well. No other indications to speak, so executive director, anything you wanted to add?
No, I think that's all fine. I think that green recovery is something we're really keen to push as a result of this and as you say, pick up the equalities issues because, you know, that there is, you know, that there's some things coming emerging from it as we see the fallout of the impact on communities that we really do want to seek to address. So we will make sure that those things are picked up in that strategy and working with local businesses to respond as things change on a regular basis. But yeah, that's, that's it from me, thank you.
Thank you very much, okay. If we move to the office of recommendations and put them to the vote now then, roll call vote, everybody knows the drill, so I'll go through alphabetically. For, against or abstain please. Councillor Devine.
For.
Councillor Emberson.
For.
Councillor Ennis.
For.
Councillor Hoskin.
For.
Councillor Page.
For.
Councillor Skeets.
For.
Councillor Stevens.
For.
Councillor Terry.
For.
And councillor White.
For.
Thank you councillors, I'm for the recommendations and so they are approved unanimously. Moving us on then to agenda item seven, housing strategy for Reading 2020 to 25 and Reading's preventing homelessness strategy 2020 to 25, pages thirty-five right through to one hundred and forty-four of your agenda papers, setting out and seeking approval for these two strategies. I've had prior indication to speak from councillor Ennis, councillor Devine has indicated as well, but if I go over to the assistant director of housing and communities to introduce the report first of all.
Thank you Chair, if I may, I'm going to pass this honour on to Sarah Tapless, who was heavily involved in drafting this strategy and she will introduce the report, thank you.
A great honour indeed, over to you Ms Tapless.
Thank you Chair. This report introduces both the housing strategy and homelessness strategy for Reading 2020 to 2025. The strategy, the housing strategy is a high level overarching document that captures the breadth of work happening throughout the council to deliver an ambition for all our residents to have the opportunity to live in a good quality, sustainable home they can afford within a thriving neighbourhood. This vision is supported by three themes, supply of accommodation, quality of accommodation and neighbourhoods, support to residents, with key messages and expectations in terms of building safety and sustainability throughout. The housing strategy will be supported by a suite of sub-strategies and work programmes which will capture the actions required to deliver the overall vision for housing. The homelessness strategy 2020 to 2025 is one of these sub-strategies, the priorities for which are intervening early to prevent and reduce homelessness in Reading, supporting people who are vulnerable to reoccurring homelessness, increasing access to decent, suitable accommodation. Both strategies have previously been consulted on and the key objectives and priorities were unanimously welcomed by the Housing, Neighbourhoods and Leisure Committee when presented to them in March. These key messages have been developed further into the two draft documents attached to this report, which if agreed today, will be adopted as live strategies for the town. Thank you.
Kindly, so first I had indication then from councillor Ennis.
Thank you Chair and thank you to Sarah for introducing this, I'm working on this document along with the housing team, Zelda and the housing team, I really want to thank them for all the work they've done. This, you know, welcome the housing strategy 2025 and the prevention of homelessness and to remember and to also to view the documents in the appendices for the consultation process. And what we're looking here is not just a refresh, it's not a refresh and a few words here and there and then a document put back so it can be put back on the shelf for anyone to say, oh, we have a strategy. This is a live, fully consulted document that has gone across town of Reading over a period of time to gauge the views and to build a strategy for housing in Reading and homelessness. It's fully consulted with the public, as you can see the appendices, other agencies, housing associations, the voluntary sector, faith groups, charities, landlords, the private sector and the council's partners who are involved in housing Reading residents and assisting in the prevention of homelessness. We took a view from the start that we want to be cross-party, we want to be as collegiate, working through other agencies, the faith sectors, charities, housing associations, but also across the council, multi-party, you know, cross-party direction to build this strategy so we can get consensus across the council. And we believe we got consensus, either they were agreeable or they were asleep for the councillors at the H and L. Certainly we're in favour and quite enthusiastic with the strategy going forward from the H and L, from the Housing, Neighbourhoods and Leisure. Agree with the two point one, two point two and two point three recommended actions to note that the authorisation of section one of six funds collected under the council's zero carbon homes local plans policy for retrofit, which is important because it's the climate change emergency and zero carbon homes and the, and the intent is, is written throughout the both strategies. And we can see the priorities that Sarah said, but we have to look at this document under the, the situation that times are hard. Now take away Covid, there's been a national housing crisis. Let's go back in the old days, February 2020, there was a long period of austerity within housing, as well as the climate emergency, where we are in the midst of a long term national housing crisis, which is particularly acute in Reading, given the success of the economy, given the success of some of the wages, but a lot of people left behind. And we have a situation where young people who are reasonably successful are stuck in negative cycle of not being able to afford, not being able to access council properties, not being able to get a mortgage, yeah, I think it's seventy-one thousand pounds each. I mean, when I, I mean, I won't tell you my stories and they'll leave it alone pop, the bad old days when you could get a mortgage at the age of twenty-two, this is different times for young people and for others, people on low incomes, you know, high rents and no chance of getting a mortgage, no hope and at the risk of being made homeless and then come forward to the present situation and the Covid, you know, which has exacerbated the problem even worse. In tough times, it's vital that organisations provide leadership and direction and I believe this council in these strategies provide leadership and direction. I believe they're clear direction linking in with others. And I think the strategy links in the target of net zero carbon dioxide emissions by 2030, working with the private sector and building our own homes, which is some of the best practice. And also what's written as a thread through this for the council is affordability. We don't just have platitudes like some councillors about affordability, we actually fight and work and build affordable houses, affordable council houses, which many will oppose from time to time, but we're unrepentant in our quest despite the obstacles to build affordable, proper affordable houses. The strategies are ambitious, linking in with the local plan, retrofit and building new homes is ambitious, but we will achieve that, we're confident. We're also linking in with the empty home strategy, the private sector stock condition, we're working across all directorates, working with good landlords as well. We're not a council, many councils always say to Labour, you're only interested in council homes, you're not interested in the private sector, we're not this council, not this Labour council. We're working with private sector good landlords, with the rent guaranteed scheme and the rent, Reading rent with confidence, which in fact is attempting to make the private sector housing more affordable for the people of Reading. We're also working with landlords and the fire service to ensure that any cladding which is in the private sector which does not meet fire standards, fire safety standards is removed. The council's own stock did not and does not have any cladding, a clear strategy achievement. Licensing of HMOs, we're robust in enforcement and we're getting more and more enforcement going on as well as the community cohesion. So you can see I've read the document and I could talk forever, but I won't, maybe a little bit more, but certainly going on to the homelessness strategy. You know, prior to two thousand, March 2020, homelessness had a hundred and seventy-eight placed in emergency accommodation. Now Covid is put more at risk, but what have you done? It's no good just having a strategy, what have you done? Well, the first thing we've done is we are building council houses, totally unrepentant in building zero carbon best practice homes. Despite the numerous obstacles, despite the opposition, we will continue to build the best homes. As we said before, I said it, a council tenant who'd been on the list with her family for eight, for a long, long time, when she got one of the houses in Conway Close, she said to us when she was moving in, this is like winning the lottery, this is beyond my best dreams and we intend on doing that for the residents, for many residents in Reading who are struggling to find decent housing. We have to move on, this is what we've achieved so far and this is what we will do. The Covid rough sleepers currently is eighty-eight accommodated, still accommodated, but we had this council, two hundred and thirty individuals coming through our doors for accommodation during the pandemic and many have moved in to supported accommodation and private sector. We're ambitious about pods for rough sleeping, construction and development tenders came back last week, so they're currently being evaluated. We want to move quickly for the forty pods, to use them for people who are going to be street homeless. Successful bid to government and the government like, you know, cross-party, the government like what this council's doing and successful funding for temporary accommodation, bed and breakfast and support for rough sleepers this year, seven hundred and fifty thousand this government, now this council were able to get funding in bids from, from the government. The ministry like the work that's been going on in this town in the attempt to eradicate homelessness and also get some decent housing for people. We're awaiting further bids for wraparound support for the pods, for services, not just housing, which is needed in homelessness, but for mental health, for drug and alcohol counselling and support for mental health. Planning agreed despite opposition on Wentzley Road for forty-six new council homes, which we believe will make that area much, much better, will transform the area. Planning application submitted for key worker homes at Arthur Hill, we know there's opposition, but them homes will be welcomed by teachers, by social workers, by health workers, which are the lifeblood of working in this town at the minute. Planning application has been submitted for that. We've submitted a bid to Green Homes Fund to deliver the insulation, external wall insulation for private sector homes and the installation of forty air source heat pumps into one block in Granville Road. I will place on record to finish, I know you're waiting for me to finish, but I want to place on record the thanks to all the officers and staff in the housing team, to Zelda, to Sarah and the team and the staff who worked tirelessly day in, day out to support the residents who are vulnerable of being homeless and want better housing. We really do place our on record our thanks to the staff and work with them. So thanks ever so much for your time, I know it went on a bit, but I think it was worth it, for me it was, and I think it's important we get this strategy agreed. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ennis, it's an introductory speech of a length that would make Fidel Castro think he had to up his game, I think. But it really is very exciting and ambitious times for the housing development across the borough with Wentzley Road, as you say, with the Arthur Hill planning application, with the temporary pods in Castle Market. I mean, it's exactly the kind of ambition of talking about previously that we need to start addressing some of the issues of inequality around Reading. Next I had councillor Devine.
Thank you Chair. First of all, I'd like to support, express my support for this housing strategy. I think it encompasses just about everything that it needs to. I would like to spend a few words on the first of the three themes, talking about Because the big issue is we are reliant on developers to build housing in Reading, for most of the housing in Reading anyway. And for the most part, they seem to be only interested on the face of it for building thousands of homes for rent in the town centre, rather than living quarters for the three thousand five hundred odd households who are on our housing waiting list. So this council must do it utmost to prize more truly affordable housing from big developments. And this is a matter of course, that it will be hugely more difficult if the current government's proposals to alter the planning system are ever implemented. And that proposed, I think that's a huge threat to the whole planning system and to our strategy indeed. The needs for new affordable homes is obvious. Whether we actually get anywhere near to building the four hundred and six affordable homes that we apparently need to meet our needs, or according to the more recent housing assessment, market assessment, five hundred and three affordable homes needed every year. And of those five hundred and three, forty percent need to be three bed properties or larger. So we have an awful long way to find these new affordable homes within Reading. And I think that's, that's the issue that we have with this strategy. We can have as good a strategy as we like, but in the end we are reliant on developers actually providing a lot of this housing. And at the moment, we don't see how we're going to get anywhere near that number of house, new affordable homes that we need to meet the council's needs. I fully support the idea of new council houses, but again, this is a rather small number compared to the one number of affordable homes in total that we need. And we are going to be reliant on developers and housing associations and they don't always have the same view of affordability as the rest of us. Nevertheless, I do fully support this housing strategy and indeed the work and the strategy being done for homelessness in Reading and especially want to complement the work that's been done since Covid, when we had to take in the homeless people and provide accommodation for them and where we have since managed to move lots of them into more suitable accommodation and at least reduced, in fact quite reduced quite significantly, the number of homelessness people in our town. So I would like to pass on my thanks to the officers who are involved in that because I think that's been a really good show all round and they deserve some applause. So thank you very much for that. I think that's probably all I need to say at the moment, so thank you very much and I do support both the housing strategy and the homelessness strategy.
Next I had councillor White.
Thank you Chair. Reading is in a housing crisis, as the report says, we've got three thousand four hundred and seventeen households on the council housing waiting As the report says, we've got 3,417 households on the council housing waiting list. Last year, 1,066 households approached the council at risk of homelessness. And the number of our residents sleeping rough on our streets was on the increase until the pandemic hit. I support the aims of the housing and the homelessness prevention strategies, but I don't think the outcomes or some of the outcomes go far enough. The housing strategy says 30% of our new housing needs to be affordable. This isn't high enough. On insulating council homes, we are doing well. But in the private rented sector, the strategy simply talks about an increase, when the reality of what we need is something like 4,000 homes in Reading insulated per year, not just an increase. I appreciate that much of this is because of inadequate national government policy. But, and green councillors will of course, support the work going on to tackle this housing crisis. But for the reasons mentioned, I'll be voting against these strategies.
Councillor Skeets.
Thank you, Chair. Well, just to let you know that we will be supporting this strategy this evening. The accommodation for the homeless is very much needed, particularly during these difficult times of the pandemic. It's unthinkable that there's homeless people during these difficult, challenging times. I also would like to thank the officers for putting together this strategy. And also to councillor Ennis, because I know he's passionate about housing and indeed his portfolio as a whole. So I fully, my group will fully be getting behind this and supporting it. Thank you, Chair.
Well, it's good, of course, to hear that we have support from the Conservative group. Very disappointing that councillor White will be voting against, but probably what we should have expected since his fellow group member voted against the council house development very recently. A bit disappointing, I mean, and kind of confusing to hear that councillor Devine fully supports new council housing when he voted against 46 new units just a few weeks ago. A bit hypocritical, I might say, but perhaps councillor Ennis has some further reflections on the debate tonight.
Yeah, I just want to come back if that's okay. I mean, certainly with councillor Devine, we've had our issues. I want to thank him for his support and want to work with, I want to work, you know, we want to work with opposition councillors who are serious about providing decent housing and affordable housing and, you know, prepared to work with councillor Devine on that. Also thanking Jeanette Skeet's and support of the local Conservative group. You know, we appreciate that and we want to work again across the wreck. We'll have our political issues, of course, and thank her for that. Councillor White, I think you've summed it up actually, I wanted to come back. I'm not surprised. This is a document that has got, you know, zero carbon and the climate emergency written through it. It's the theme that's right through it and deliberately so. And, you know, the officers are really keen to ensure that's the situation. It's not just a political message or, as I use the word, strategies, it is a theme. And if you look at the new build that's going in from ourselves that we got control over, it's best practice, it's, I forget the name of it, Stravon House or whatever, Passive House, Passive House. You know, standards which are the best in the country, which other areas have won awards and we could have won awards and we can win awards for our green strategy, zero carbon, low, you know, low fuel emission use, cheap bills, cheap, you know, heating and very, very energy efficient, the best in the country. And you'd have thought the Green Party would have run with that and supported that. But maybe, I don't know what it would take the Green Party to support the council on that. As you said, councillor Williams, who hadn't been to, hadn't seen, doesn't even know, I don't think, where Wednesday Road is, doesn't know, was talking about this fantastic green space. If he'd have gone there and seen it, he'd have seen exactly what we're going to be building on. And again, the officers have gone out of their way to make more trees, to make it more energy efficient and to make it better. But they voted against it. And we have to ask ourselves, really, they may want to call themselves the political point scoring party rather than the Green Party, but we're not upset and we're not surprised. But we will want to work with other organisations as well. Oh, by the way, before I go, the Green Party supported the strategy at the HNL. So when he says green councillors, I think he might mean himself, but there you go. Thanks for your time and that little rant, but we will get there and support, thanks for the support of the strategy.
Maybe councillor Ennis, they were asleep rather than agreeable at HNL. But since I did taunt councillor Devine, it seems right that I should give him a right of reply before I go back to Sarah Tapless. So councillor Devine.
Damn right I want to reply. What I voted against at the planning committee was taking away of 60% of the immunity land of the people living in the blocks of flats. And that frankly was too much. And so yes, I'm all in favour of affordable housing. Councillor Ennis knows exactly how supportive I've been over the last several years on building affordable, truly affordable housing. But what was proposed on Coley Park was one step too many, I'm afraid. And for me and for others, the loss of the immunity land, the huge loss of immunity land, was not a sufficient excuse.
You muted yourself part of the way through there councillor Devine.
Gosh, there we go. Yes, what I was voting against was taking away 60% of the immunity land of the people living in the flats, in the tower blocks. And we could have done with actually a smaller scale development of affordable housing and I would have supported it very strongly. But there we go. Just to make that one clear, I'm not voting against affordable housing.
And councillor Devine, I'm glad, of course, that the Wednesday Road application was approved by the planning applications committee. I'm glad that the office of recommendation was to approve it. And of course, I'm glad that the local ward councillors representing people in the area were fully behind and are still fully behind the scheme, which would be a good scheme that improves the quality of the environment in that area. Anyway, time to go back to Sarah Tapless. Ms Tapless, anything you wanted to comment on in the discussion tonight?
Nothing further for me, Chair. Thank you.
So thank you very much. In which case we move to the roll call vote, alphabetically as ever. Four against or abstain, please. Councillor Devine.
Four.
Councillor Emberson.
Four.
Councillor Ennis.
Four.
Councillor Hoskin.
Four.
Councillor Page.
Four.
Councillor Skeets.
Four.
Councillor Stevens.
Four.
Councillor Terry.
Four.
And councillor White.
Against.
I'm for the recommendations, so I can confirm that they are approved. Takes us on to agenda item eight, planning white paper and other national planning changes. Report setting out for approval, a proposed response to government consultations on the planning white paper and on other changes to the planning system. I've had prior indication from councillor Page, but first of all, I'll go over to Mark Waringham to introduce the report.
Thank you, Chair. And this paper highlights two current consultations by the government relating to the planning system and proposes draft council responses to these consultations. The first consultation is on the planning white paper. And this proposes a fundamental reshaping of the planning system in England and would be the most significant change to the system since it was first introduced in 1947. Its proposals have wide ranging implications for how the planning service of this and every authority in England would operate. It starts from the presumption that the planning system is a block on providing the homes that this country needs and that a radical overhaul is needed to solve the housing crisis. Sweeping changes are proposed to plan making, development management and infrastructure funding. And these have implications for resourcing, for local democracy and for community engagement. These changes are summarised in the covering report and their introduction would require a new act of parliament. The second consultation is more limited in scope, but has some significant implications. And that proposes some changes to the way the existing planning system works in advance of the more fundamental changes in the white paper. These could be introduced through simple amendments to national policy or in some cases through secondary legislation and could therefore be brought in much more quickly. These deal with four matters, which are changes to the standard methodology for assessing housing needs, introduction of a new affordable housing product, first homes, raising the threshold for securing affordable housing contributions to 40 or 50 dwellings and extension of the permission in principle application route to major developments. These changes are also summarised in the covering report. The report recommends agreeing the responses to these consultations set out in appendix one and two. There's an opportunity to take the response to the planning white paper to planning applications committee on the 7th of October for their input. And the report therefore seeks delegation to incorporate any comments that result. Because the deadline for responses on the other consultation on changes to the current planning system is before planning applications committee sits, there will not be an opportunity for that committee to amend that response. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Waringham. I think these are some of the most damaging proposals come forward from the government in planning terms. And I think would be a great, they do pose a great threat to local democracy. But over to councillor Page.
Thank you, Chair. And can I firstly thank Mark Waringham and his colleagues in the planning section for a very full and comprehensive response, which must have been addedly difficult for them. Because they, along with most other local authority planning officers, remain committed to a system that whilst not perfect, certainly has delivered a degree of accountability and transparency that is threatened by these proposals. Chair, can I firstly turn to the white paper proposals? And as Mark has rightly said, there are two responses. There are, there's the white paper proposals and I will just pick out a few points in respect of that. I wonder if we could turn to page 153 first, which is the first page of the response to the planning white paper consultation. And I would start off remarks about any discussion of the current planning system by drawing attention to the fact that the planning system has delivered hundreds of thousands of planning consents for new houses and flats across the country that remain unbuilt and unbuilt out. And as recently as the 4th of September, Shelter published a report, which again reminded us that of three, that more than 380,000 homes granted planning permission in England between 2011 and 2019 remain unbuilt. And if you look at the answer to question five, Reading's contribution to those figures is set out. In Reading, there are nearly 4,000 dwellings with planning permission but not started at March 2020. And further down, at March 2020, there are local plan allocations and developments with a resolution to grant permission, subject to section 106, almost 9,000 homes. And every year for the last 15, 20 years, Reading has delivered more houses and flats than the targets that were set by government. So it's not planning permissions, it's not the planning system that is in any way inhibiting housing, house building. What is it? It is market forces. And the Letwin report of two years ago highlighted that for obvious reasons. And it doesn't take a master's degree in economics to understand the concept that house builders obviously do not wish to flood the market. Because that might, heaven forbid, bring house prices down and make houses somewhat more affordable. So they bank them, they hoard them, and that hoarding continues. And that, Chair, is the problem. And that is a problem that is completely ignored in the government's own documentation. And the sentence that straddles 153 to 154 is absolutely right. The existing planning system delivers land for homes here and a fundamental change to the system is simply not required. Going on to page 155, about streamlining local plans. The first sentence absolutely encapsulates it. This amounts to a wholesale centralisation of much of planning policy. We then have on that theme, page 158. Do you think there's a case for allowing new settlements to be brought forward under the nationally significant infrastructure projects regime? No. And the narrative immediately following it on the top of page 159, the nationally significant infrastructure project process removes all local democratic accountability from the process. It would amount to a huge power grab by central government as the Secretary of State would be the decision maker. And then if we go a few pages on to page 161, about a statutory timescale for the production of local plans. It is worth looking at the final paragraph on that page. It's worth noting that one of the biggest reasons that there is a delay in plan making is because of continual changes by central government. And that again is contributing to delays in local plans across the country. We got our local plan through last November, the first in Berkshire. But how much of that will survive these proposals is another matter. Then we come on to beauty. This was a right corker, which I hope had, I know had some colleagues falling about. And page 164, do you agree with our proposals for implementing a fast track for beauty? Well, there are some people who could do with a fast track for beauty, but I'm not sure it's the planning process that will deliver that, Chair. And the paragraph, two paragraphs below that states quite rightly, it betrays a lack of understanding of local opposition to development. The aesthetic quality of development is rarely the main reason that local residents object. Strain on infrastructure is much more significant as are noise and disturbance and environmental impacts. Beauty is rarely an issue that gets people uptight. It sometimes features, but it is a lesser issue. So Chair, moving on, so the demolition job that Mark and colleagues have done on the white paper is there for all to see. And I'm glad, just in passing, Chair, to hear that Mark was able to brief the other groups on the council, met with the Conservative councillors and with councillor Devine. And the briefing was offered to the Greens, but I understand they took some more written briefing, which is their prerogative. But no councillor on this authority has been refused the opportunity to probe much more deeply into the draft responses that are before us this evening. Moving on to appendix two, as Mark alluded to in his introduction, this actually has the more controversial and potentially in the short term, much more damaging proposals. And these are not subject to legislation through the House of Commons as the white paper would require. These can all be implemented by ministerial fiat and could be implemented theoretically by the end of this calendar year. So plucking out the first that's most relevant to Reading. If you were Wokingham, we would be spending more time on the issue of calculating housing need. And on page 172, it challenged me when I read Mark's calculations there, but I accept that he knows what he's talking about there in the formula. And even though I got a grade two in my O level maths, this still flummoxes me slightly. But the fact is that areas of the south, particularly out But the fact is that areas of the south, particularly outside of urban centres, are being asked to take more than a doubling of previous house allocations. And that obviously is causing a lot of consternation, particularly in areas such as Wokingham. Of major impact to Reading will be the change around what's called first homes, identified on page 173, which will skew the, what can be deployed towards affordable housing and will remove much local discretion from us. That is, of course, whatever funds are available for affordable housing. And that brings me on to the most devastating of the proposals that this, the short term changes contain, and that's on the affordable housing threshold. And on page 176, a response is set out about the proposal that the government is canvassing of removing any contributions towards affordable housing for new sites of up to 40 homes or even 50 homes. And those colleagues who have been around a few years, and councillor Dveen and councillor White both have, will remember that this council, along with West Berkshire, Conservative-controlled, went to the High Court, and we scored, it was basically a one-all draw against the government. But what we did establish was the right for local councils with exceptional needs such as Reading to be able to require contributions towards affordable housing from every single development, whether it be one house or 100 houses. For the smaller developments, obviously, they would not be on site, and those are off-site financial contributions up to 10 houses. But the principle, and again, it was endorsed in the local plan last year, was that Reading, because of its very acute housing need, and we've heard from councillors Ennis and Dveen and White about that need, has a right, almost unique in the country, to require affordable housing contributions from all developments. That will go, that will go completely if the government's proposals are allowed to progress. And the reading of the proposals is that there would be no discretion to a council like Reading. And the vast majority of our developments in this town are of the smaller developments. So bang goes a large swathe of affordable housing contributions. And Chair, just to conclude, and I hope this will secure cross-party, indeed all-party support. Can I, as you know, I'm an avid reader of the Daily Tory, the Daily Telegraph, and Saturday's edition of the Daily Telegraph had a very good piece in it. Tory heartlands will have to find space for one and a half million new homes. And it pointed out that because of this new algorithm that's referred to in Mark's briefing, 34 local authorities with local plans that cover the home counties will see an average increase of 104% compared with their already agreed local plan targets. However, in the north of England, fewer homes, fewer homes will be required in Scarborough, Barnsley, Rotherham, Leeds, Nottingham, Lancaster, and the list goes on and on. So where does this leave the levelling up agenda? Because the resources are being funnelled into the South East, and obviously with those new homes will come demands for new infrastructure. And the government will not be able to level up and switch funds to the north because they'll be sucked in to huge numbers of extra houses in the South East. And the Tory MP for the Isle of Wight, Bob Sealy, writing in the same Telegraph article, said, Britons in the red wall seats will see little change in their communities as infrastructure cash goes to the Shires. Shire voters will react with anger at swathes of greenfield planning. And to conclude, Chair, what better person than I can quote and his analysis of the White Paper and the short-term proposals than my good friend councillor John Halsall, the leader of Wokingham Council? And let me conclude by just reading a couple of sentences from his excellent article on Conservative Home, another website I read with great attention. And John Halsall wrote as follows. The Cummings affair, Robert Jenrick, coronavirus, Scotland and school results have hugely dented us Tories. The MHCLG, the Ministry of Housing and Local Government, is proposing to give pretty much all control to developers to carpetbag the nation. The changes to the current planning system, this has the meat, he says. No debate, no appeal, it only needs ministerial approval, implemented by a simple decision on his behalf. It does all of these within the existing planning system. So please, before this becomes yet another algorithm shambles, rip up this White Paper and reform the planning system in accordance with the Tory manifesto, which by the way, said none of this. So Chair, I hope we'll get unanimous cross-party support for sending a clear message to the government that Labour, Tory, Lib Dem and Green councillors want none of this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Page. A speech that'll make councillor Ennis think he needs to up his game. Two indications, one from councillor Dveen, one from councillor Stephens. So councillor Dveen first.
Thank you, Chair. And surprise, surprise, I'm actually going to agree with an awful lot of what councillor Page has just said. More interestingly, it seems that this planning White Paper has put the backs up of not just Labour, Lib Dem and Green councillors up and down the country, but a vast number of Tories as well. And to the point where we think that this is actually going to get buried, because the weight of opinion amongst the Tory councillors is that strong. Nevertheless, we've had to make a response, and I absolutely agree with the responses that Mark Waringham has set out in the report. I agree with all of them, I think. This White Paper and the two reports, the two consultations together produce a developer's charter. The idea that we don't need local authority or even local public opinion to be taken into account when we are building new houses is really not acceptable. I don't really know where they're coming from. As I said, it's put the backs up of not just Labour and Lib Dem and Green parties, but a lot of the Tory faithful as well. The consultations are slimmed down, gosh, and frankly, presumption of being able to build is going to make our local plans totally superfluous, I suspect. Plus the fact that the centralisation of power in Westminster goes against everything that we've been trying to do in terms of providing local responses and local authority, local authority management of their, their housing and their, their planning. This is a change that is, I don't know who requires it, but this is dreamt up in Westminster by people who have no, no idea of what their local authorities do or want. And I presume this is coming from Mr Cummings, but I wouldn't dare say that in public, would I? I think the, the issue of first homes is typical. They are going to take away all the money that we currently, or lots of the money that we currently devote to affordable housing, is going to be used for first-time homes, which are totally unaffordable for most of the people who need affordable housing. This is just, again, not acceptable. It's, it's a big slap in the face for anybody who wants to work with, or anybody working with, housing. So again, I agree with the, the reports. I'm very happy with the responses that have been set out. And indeed, we had an interesting debate at the Liberal Democrat Party Conference on this Planning White Paper and associated changes, and have come up with, as you can imagine, a very similar answer. And so, yep, my support to this report, and I hope that it gets buried well and truly very soon. Thank you.
And councillor Dveen, councillor Stephens.
Thank you, Chairman. It's not been a good summer for algorithms, has it? I have to say, initially I understand the issue that they were trying to confront, the problem of lack of houses being built. We understand that. And yet they seem to have gone off a complete tangent in their sort of, their analysis of the problem and then proposed solution. And I find it quite extraordinary that a government department can successfully unify all the major parties, certainly at local level, in resistance against what's being planned. So yes, we're, we're very supportive of the, the proposed response, and all credit to Mark Waringham. I think he's written an excellent paper. I was initially a bit concerned it would be very politically loaded against what was being planned, but actually what he's produced is a very professional, thoughtful, well-considered paper. And indeed, in our briefing, I'm very grateful to Mr Waringham for the briefing, I said, well, surely the, the departments have looked to other countries and their planning systems, and if they perceived deficiencies in ours, then they must have looked at the, the sort of strong points of other nations, other countries, but in European countries, and how they compare, and then drawn the best points from them and distilled them into a proposed solution to our system. That, that would make sense to me. Not a bit of it, apparently, and what was being proposed doesn't bear any sort of, sort of comparison of what's being done in other countries. So we can't even say that they looked at best practice and come up with a proposed solution that best works for, for Britain or England certainly. I take the point completely about the fact that Reading has actually planned and actually approved more housing than we need currently, which is again, is a positive. So one's left thinking, yes, we understand the problem you've identified, but how, how can you regard this as the solution? It's, it's very disappointing. And I agree with councillor Dveen, he says it would be buried. I'm afraid what we're going to see is an enormous backbench opposition to this. And I should think sufficient for it not to get through the Commons. I am concerned about the initial sort of changes to the current system, but I suspect even then, so there'll be sufficient resistance to those of them to not progress. So it's disappointing, and I can only sort of offer our support to the proposed response, and let us hope that either the government comes back with something far more thoughtful and suitable and responsive to the problems of, of local authorities, and certainly not something so anti-democratic. That's, I think, the other concern that I have, that the idea just walks over local democracy, which again is so anti-conservative. I think the surprise for us as Conservatives is it's our government has come up with this. And so we're sort of disappointed and feel disappointed they can't actually support something they've proposed. But we're not going to because we think it's wrong in principle and certainly wouldn't work in practice. So we support the proposed response. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stephens. And one can only assume the Conservative government thought that it didn't have enough issues to deal with at any one time, and they had to bring this forward, but there you are. No other indications to speak, so if I go back to Mr Waringham, if there's anything you wanted to add?
No, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. In which case we'll move to the roll call vote, alphabetical order as ever. Councillor Dveen.
Four.
Councillor Emberson.
Four.
Councillor Ennis.
Four.
Councillor Hoskin.
Four.
Councillor Page.
Four.
Councillor Skeats.
Four.
Councillor Stephens.
Four.
Councillor Terry.
Four.
And councillor White.
Four.
Thank you all. That moves us on then, sorry, I should say I'm for, and therefore the recommendations are approved unanimously. Moves us on to item nine, the draft affordable housing supplementary planning document. Prior indications from councillor Page and councillor Ennis, but if I first of all then go back to Mark Waringham to introduce the report.
Thank you very much, Chair. The adoption of the Reading local plan in November 2019, we're now in a position where we can move forward with the production of supplementary planning documents, or SPDs. SPDs add detail to specific policies in the local plan but don't make policy in their own right. This report concerns an affordable housing SPD, which will add detail on policies H3 and H4 of the local plan, and will set detail on how we'll secure contributions towards affordable housing from new development. It would replace the existing affordable housing SPD, which dates from 2013 and is part of the old policy regime that predated the local plan, and it's been prepared alongside the new housing strategy that's already been discussed. The local plan sets the proportion of affordable housing that will be required on different sizes of sites and includes some key principles, but leaves some of the detailed matters to the SPD. One of the key matters that the SPD needs to look at is tenure of affordable housing. And the SPD proposes that where affordable housing is to be delivered on site, 62% would be rented and 38% would be for affordable home ownership. And for that rented tenure, the SPD proposes a new tenure, Reading Affordable Rent, which is capped at 70% of market rents, and has been calculated to be set at a level affordable to residents in need of housing in Reading, to make sure that many more genuinely affordable rented properties are secured. Some of the remaining content of the SPD is similar to what was set out in the previous version, but some of the other significant changes include detail on securing affordable housing in build-to-rent schemes, which will enable us to be prepared to deal with this new form of accommodation, which is increasingly being sought by applicants in Reading. It also adds detail on securing deferred contributions, which allow us to secure an increased contribution on non-policy compliant developments if viability improves during the development period. The report recommends that a draft affordable housing SPD be published for public consultation, which will last for a period of six weeks. Subject to the results of consultation, the next stage will be to bring the SPD back for adoption to use in deciding planning applications, which is expected to take place early in 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Waringham. Over to councillor Page.
Chair, I'll be much briefer than on the previous item. Obviously, the affordable housing issue, this whole document is predicated on us having any affordable housing resources to deploy. And obviously, if the changes, the short-term changes go through, then this document will need to be revisited. But at the moment, we are planning very much on the existing arrangements. This is a document going out for consultation. The priority for some of us is still to ensure that as much of the contributions that we receive for off-site building goes to new council house building. That is, as you know, Chair, the top priority for us as an administration, and sites are being taken forward for that. But clearly, where there is onsite affordable housing, then the approach that is set out is one that I would commend, and I know that councillor Ennis and other colleagues want to say more about that. So I shall do no more than hope that this will secure unanimous support as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Page. Over to councillor Ennis.
Get myself on camera. Yeah, I won't have the four-hour Fidel Castro full speech. Certainly to support this, support the recommended actions. I think councillor Dveen actually hit the nail on the head when he talked about being at the mercy of developers. And what we can put in our SPD, affordable SPD, we can put what we like, but if we don't get it achievable and realistic, and that we can convince developers, because we're talking about the private sector here, we're talking about development here, and if we can't do that, then it's not worth the paper it's written on. And we've had ourselves discussions about trying to attempt to get rent down to the, to the affordable levels of council house rents, which is not involved in this. And that would be a great achievement if we could, we could achieve full council rent affordability. But how many properties have developers done for, completed for council house rents? Very few. And there's no legal requirement of them to do it at the moment, and there potentially will be no requirement of them to do it in the future. And we know some, many developers don't like affordable housing because it cuts into their profits. So what this attempt, this SPD, affordable housing, is attempting to do is to push for the 70- is to push for the 70% rent cap. And it's a cap, it's max. It's not the level that we would, would go for, it's max. And if we can achieve a rent cap in this town, in the private sector, whilst building more and more council houses and working with housing associations for lower rent, I think we will achieve many of the numbers that we're looking for for affordable housing. Now, people say 70%, is that really affordable? Well, if you look at the figures, yes, it is. It's far more affordable than anything above 70% of 80%. It still gives the reductions for families, for individuals and couples who are living in private rented sector. I think a figure I saw, £185 a month, which is not in, you know, don't quite meet, but I believe that's one of the figures on some of the rented properties. That's not insignificant numbers. So to aim for a 70% cap and discuss that with, and have it in the plan with developers, with builders, I think will be a good achievement. You know, we have to look at what's realistic. We have to look at what we're trying to achieve in the private sector. And I think a 70% rent cap, which we could call a Reading Affordable Rent, which is in the report, I think would be really, really positive. And I think people who are renting, Reading residents who are renting in the town would welcome that. And we can, we can achieve it. So thank you to fully support the document, fully support the consultation. And will be interesting to see what comes back. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ennis, next I had councillor Dveen.
There we go. Thank you Chair. Yes, I'd like to express my full support for this SPD. I think it sets out just about everything correctly. I have some reservations about viability testing, and that's probably quite well known. But also, more recently, we've had one or two issues with deferred contributions, which as a method of extracting, I think is the word, more affordable housing from developers, doesn't, to my mind, appear to be a very productive route to go down. And in fact, and I think it basically provides a fig leaf to cover up the developers for not actually providing any affordable housing, or at least very much reduced affordable housing. So although it's there and it's, the mechanism is there, I think we should prefer not to use it. Because I think it is, as I said, just a fig leaf cover for the developers. The idea of a 70% rent cap is really a very good idea. If we can achieve it, all well and good, and I hope that that's, that is a possibility. I don't really want to say much more, other than we are going to support this.
Thank you councillor Dveen, no other indications to speak. Mr Warringham, anything you wanted to add?
Yes, I mean, just on the deferred contributions, that's, that's in there as a, to cover a situation where a developer wouldn't otherwise pay absolutely nothing at all, or a much reduced version. So it's just there to capture what, what we can as viability improves. So it's certainly not there in place of achieving affordable housing at the time when we can.
Thank you very much for that clarification. In which case now we move to the roll call vote, alphabetical order, councillor Dveen.
Four.
Councillor Emberson. Councillor Ennis. Councillor Hoskin.
Four.
Councillor Page. Councillor Skeets.
Four.
Councillor Stevens.
Four.
Councillor Terry.
Four.
And councillor White.
Four.
I'm also for, so they are therefore approved unanimously. Excellent, thank you all. This takes us then to the end of the public part of the meeting. And so for item 10, I need to move the motion to exclude the press and public from the meeting for the final three items of business which are listed on the agenda. Pursuant to section 100A of Local Government Act 1972 as amended, members of the press and public be excluded during consideration of the following items on the agenda, as it is likely that there would be disclosure of exempt information as defined in paragraphs 1, 2 and 3 of part one of schedule 12A of that act. So can I ask members of the press and the public to leave the meeting in case anybody's still in here somehow? And thank you to everybody who's watching. So thank you.